Welcome to the city of West Miami. Today is Wednesday, July 19, 2017, at 7:45, I'm sorry, 7:45. For the invocation, Ms. Aguilar.
Thank you, please rise. Let's take a minute to bow our heads and thank God for our daily blessings and to pray for those that are less fortunate than we are. May God bestow His blessings upon all the citizens of the city of West Miami and all those in attendance this evening. We pray for leadership and we pray for the West Miami City Commission so that the mayor and commissioners always make the best decisions that have the greater impact to the citizens that they serve. We pray so that our police officers, firefighters, and military personnel abroad stay safe and return home to their families safe. We ask this in your name, God. Amen.
Chief, for the pledge.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Roll call, Mayor Eduardo Mujina.
President.
Vice Mayor Candy Blanca.
Yes.
Commissioner Juan Blanes.
Present.
Commissioner Ronda Rodriguez.
Present.
Commissioner Luciano Suarez.
Yes.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Next item?
Item four, presentation of minutes for approval for July 5, 2017, regular city commission meeting.
Motion, second.
Okay, any comments? No? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. At this time, I would like to take a point of privilege and I want to welcome to our city Sandy Micky from ATS. Welcome to our city.
Welcome.
Welcome, Sandy.
Do you want to say anything to us? Any good news for us? Don't pay attention to the attorney or our chief of police. You're good, okay. Once again, thank you and welcome to our city. Next item?
Item five, report of the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'll keep it very brief. I have a written request to you all. We have this evening Rose Freeman representing, actually, she's the district secretary to our state representative, Ms. Daisy Baez with District 114. Welcome, Rose, and extend our regards to our state representative. I've been talking to Rose to accommodate a request by State Representative Daisy Baez, who would like to use the chambers for Thursday, August 31, 2017, for a town meeting during the evening hours. I think we spoke about sometime between 6:00 and 8:00 PM, 6:30 to 8:00 PM, and it appears that this room lends itself for the type of meeting that the representative would like to have and obviously, we're not dealing with another venue. This is your council chambers and I felt that the approval should come from our elected body. So, that being said, Rose Freeman is here this evening and if you have any questions, she's more than willing to address those.
Welcome to our city. You want to come forward and speak a little bit? Just state your name and address for the record.
My name is Rose Freeman and our offices are at 5542 Southwest 8th Street. I'm very familiar with your offices here. We do kind of run in from time to time. We work a lot with the seniors in El Comedor next door whenever they have festivities. And I love your shopping center on 67th. I live there getting my lunch. But anyway, Daisy Baez would like to come in and address some of the constituents regarding the legislative, giving them a legislative update as well as having maybe an open question and answer type little session towards the end of the session. It will be very informal. I do want to mention that there is a possibility that Senator Javier Rodriguez may join us at the same meeting, at the same town hall. And that's the purpose for my being here today.
Thank you. And once again, welcome to our city.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'd just like to call.
I'm sorry.
I think you're very welcome, Daisy and also Javier, they are welcome. This is the district, so we have the door open. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, I just like to ask whether or not, are you going to have an agenda or something for our records? I think that would be very good and it would be very nice for the city to have in the records a very distinguished guest. I think that that would be great.
Okay. All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye. I have one question before we aye. Madam Manager, is anything that would preempt our approval for this? I mean, anything that would preempt it?
No, I mean, it's not a request that comes to the table often, but it has happened in the past and this commission has granted to governing agencies that work with the city or for the city, we've allowed them the use of the chambers before, but that approval has always come from the body.
Perfect, then I am an approval as well.
Okay. Before we continue, unless you have anything else for the manager's report, I would like to, any item that you suggest that we should take out of order at this time?
Mr. Mayor, you have some presentations this evening. I don't know whether there's anyone in the audience. I don't see anybody.
I don't see anybody.
So, if you want to defer this item, I would encourage you to defer it to the next meeting and we will contact the sponsors again.
Okay.
And ask them to be here at the August 16, 2017 meeting.
Okay, so in that case, shall we follow the order of the agenda? Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so please do.
Next item is item six, report of the city attorney.
I would have a retracted report on this meeting at the next commission meeting since I think that it would be prudent for me not to speak about that particular issue tonight.
Okay. Well taken. Next item?
Item seven, report of the city engineers, none this evening. Item eight, committee reports, report of the mayor.
I have no report. Anybody else on committee reports?
No, sir.
Okay.
Yes, I do have something.
Go ahead.
Thank you for reminding me. I almost forgot. I had a conversation with the city manager earlier today and I had a thought, an idea. I know that we're in the process of redoing all our street signs, hopefully, soon. We're going to change them from the green color to a blue color and hopefully paint the, the, what? The concrete markers where the street signs and avenue signs go. So, I thought of enhancing it and adding a small seal of the city somewhere in there to, you know, to set us apart. So, Mr. Penna got into the action and beat me to the punch and came up with an idea. I was thinking of doing the, putting the city logo in between the number of the street and the avenue, but he said that that would make the numbers smaller because they would have to fit the, the city seal. So, he proposed this, which I'm not sure how this, like this.
If that's going to be on the top, how will you see it? Is that still going to be on the top?
We will, the street markers that we have are homemade. We have a steel marked frame that we put together to make the concrete markers. So, we would grab that mark, steel frame and add the piece to the top in metal.
A layer.
So that when we cast it, it'll be part of the casting. And then it'll have a six-inch circle on the top, just slightly indented so that the plate with the seal would go in there.
So, visible from the?
From both sides of the sign.
So, oh, okay, all right, I see, I get it, all right.
Yeah, it's not leaning, it's not sitting on top.
Right, that's what I'm thinking, it's sitting on top.
No, no, no. It is sitting on top, but it's facing at you.
Got you.
Right.
You don't have to have your helicopter to look at it.
Exactly.
Right, right.
So, I thought by doing this, you know, this would distinguish the city and our boundaries and, you know, it will give us, it will give, you know, the residents, you know, a sense of pride and belonging and I think that it can add very positively, you know, to the quality of life, you know, to our residents. And it's not something that it will cost a lot more because we're already in the process of doing it.
That was going to be my question.
Before we go to cost, let me say something. Well, I don't know how I even came up with that idea. So, no, but, okay, you know how many times people have asked me this question? Does that belong to West Miami?
Yeah.
You know, how can you tell what's West Miami, not West Miami? And my answer is always the same. Well, you know, you see the signs on the floor? That's West Miami. When you see them on the pole, that's Dade County.
That's my answer. You know what my answer is?
Also, when you don't see a sidewalk, that's not West Miami. So, but I had to repeat that again and again and again and again because people, you know, so I think it's a good idea.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to take a-
I'm only worried about money, so.
I'm going to take it one step further. When I get asked that question, I say, "Look at the garbage cans."
That's true? That's true?
Because everyone has a blue recycling, but if you see a green garbage can, that's the county. If you see a normal Home Depot garbage can, you know, it's not a county, then it's us. So, I go by the garbage cans. So, this is a much nicer way to say. Don't look at the garbage can, look at, I like it.
So, on further discussion with the city manager, she also came up with her own idea of, in some main thoroughfares, like 62nd Avenue, 16th Street, Silvania.
The gateway roads.
The gateway roads of West Miami, that we can go further and have a sort of a custom-made standing street sign, you know.
As opposed to this? Or in addition to this?
Just in these areas, not all the areas.
But as opposed to this, in those areas, as opposed to?
No, no, no.
Or in addition to?
In addition to. In addition to.
If I may?
Yes.
Just to clarify that, we spoke about embellishing these signs a little bit by adding the material that Mr. Penna has suggested and during our conversation today, but we spoke about not having every intersection done in this way, but having specific roads highlighted by these enhancements to the street signs. Having them at every street corner, then you're talking about a cost factor and I think it may be an overkill, as they call it, but I think that if you designate these markers on some of our gateway roads, I think it's going to look particularly elegant and obviously, all the other signs, since they're going to be made out of the same blue material, they're going to fall right into place, but it is going to give us a sense of identity. Now, putting a pole over the same location may not look as nice. We may want to look in the future at additional signage where you don't have these street markers.
Well, that's what I thought we were going to do.
Well, we talked about both scenarios today.
Can I interrupt you both?
Yes.
I'm not the city attorney, but this came on the report. I don't want to take away the excitement. I think it's a great idea personally, but I think it needs to be discussed further in another forum. We have the budget tonight, presentation and, but I think, you know, if you can bring this as an item to the table next time so we can discuss it.
In detail, yes.
Because anytime that you discuss colors and design, trust me, I know, it can be hours, so.
I agree, I agree, next time.
Good idea.
Next time, okay?
I just wanted to run it.
Good idea.
Good idea.
All right.
We'll wait to see it back on the agenda.
And brainstorm it and maybe we're going to add and improve and.
Any, anything else for reports? Okay, next item?
Item nine, citizen presentations, no presentations, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Item 10, under unfinished business, none this evening. Oh, yes, no, we have one, which is item 10A, nomination of members and alternate members to the charter review board. This is by mayor and city commissioner and the commissioner who needs to appoint a member to the charter review board, it's Commissioner Suarez. All the other commissioners have appointed already their own members.
Yes.
I want to nominate a member, Natalie Millian is here with us tonight. She's an excellent, excellent professional lady, young lady, so I nominate her for this committee, I mean, with the board. The clerk have all the details, her number, her email, everything, so she will call you and get the call.
Congratulations, Natalie.
Thank you very much.
Excellent idea. I'm going to tell you the same thing I told Commissioner Blanes. I'm sorry I didn't come up with that first.
Yes, and Mr. Mayor and commissioners, now that we have the five appointed members to the charter review board, it's time to determine when the charter review board will meet. The first meeting should be like an organizational meeting and where the members are sworn in, so our recommendation is to hold that meeting on the same day as that, we have a commission meeting on August 16 at an earlier time, around 6 o'clock or 5:30. It's up to you and we can maybe use the calendar that the city manager provided as part of the budget for your reference. August 16 is the commission meeting day.
Furthermore, may I, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I think that we should also contemplate, we do have a full charter review board present right now, but I think that you should also think about appointing alternate members in case that somebody cannot come or something. And in addition, I would strongly suggest that we send a letter to each one of the members of the charter review advising them that we recommend for them to review the charter and to bring for the first meeting items that they think should be reviewed. We don't want to come to the first meeting just naked. We just want to have some substantive issues that would be presented in order to save a lot of times. It would be very bad for us to start educating as to what has, what does the charter says and et cetera. So, it would be very easy for the members to review the charter before they come out to the meeting and to have an idea of what things each one of the members feel that should be changed.
Okay. Good idea. Going back to the dates, Madam Clerk, what are you suggesting? The August 16?
Our recommendation was August 16.
Is that, that's a commission meeting, right?
Yes.
Prior to it? Like a, like a 6 o'clock meeting?
6 o'clock, yes, 6 o'clock.
Yes.
August 16, I would be out of town.
Okay. Any other suggestion? I mean, we, we had two choices. I mean, either let's come up with another date or, and again, I got to yield to the clerk because I, I don't want to fall into the situation that we have fallen before, that we, that we are crunching at the last minute.
Yes, the next, regular commission meeting is September 6, which was canceled and it was changed to September 7 for our budget, tentative budget meeting and.
But that date is now no longer valid, the 7th, and I'll address you on that during the budget.
I have also to review the number of dates that we have to complete the charter review before we do it. I don't remember exactly, Madam Clerk?
Yes, by August 15, prescribed by the charter, the city must appoint a charter review board, which at this point has been accomplished.
Well, when is it that we have to, we have to submit it, certain amount of days before the election?
On that, based on this, now I will get in touch with the elections department to see when our, if any, any charter amendment questions have to be submitted to them in order to make it for the elections of April 10 of 2018, our city elections.
Then what I would suggest is this, for the commission to instruct the clerk to just make such inquiry and for the clerk to suggest to you specific dates that not necessarily we can have it on the commission meeting date, although that would be ideal. But the thing is that the sooner the better, so we can act fast and have all the questions because as you remember, in past days, we have had extended charter review committee meetings, which is very taxing.
Okay.
We have another recommendation, another date, August 23, which is a Wednesday at 6 o'clock.
But that's a non-meeting day.
That's a non-commission meeting.
Commission meeting day.
It's fine with me. I mean, that date's fine as well, if, since Commissioner Suarez will not be here for the 16th.
23rd.
The 23rd.
I will tell you in a minute. I'm fine with that day as well. Anybody else?
Commissioner Suarez?
The 23rd of August, 6 o'clock?
Yes.
Okay with me so far.
Okay, Commissioner Blanes?
I'm sorry.
August 23, 6:00 PM, are you available?
August 23?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Okay, so.
At 6? Yes.
The first meeting of the charter review.
Organization of meeting.
Let me make a comment.
Yes.
Couple of years ago, charter review board was August 25, my birthday.
Oh, look at that.
And a popular lady brought me a cake. You remember? Your friend? She brought me a cake?
I didn't bring you a cake.
No, your friend.
So, Commissioner Suarez, is that a hint? Is that a hint for?
We'll be celebrating Commissioner Suarez's birthday.
You want me to bring you a cake? Is that what you're going with this?
No, no.
No, he likes the cookies.
This year is going to be- You want, okay, you want cookies or cake? Answer, cookies or cake?
Whatever you want.
A cookie with a candle.
You are expert in cookies.
You're getting a cookie with a candle.
This year is going to be the 23rd and a couple of years ago was August 23.
Right, before your birthday, you made us, you made us well aware of that already. You got it.
The pre-birthday celebration.
I don't remember, bringing your cookie with a candle.
Yes.
We're done.
Respectfully, I suggest that we move on because we have a lot of things in the agenda.
Yes.
Yes.
Especially, especially a couple of ordinances that we need to address.
Okay.
Which are very important.
Madam Clerk, keep this thing in order, so please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, all the members, appointed members will be notified, a copy of the charter will be sent to them and scheduled then. The meeting will be scheduled for August 23.
Do we need to appoint an alternate as well?
It's recommended to appoint alternates as the charter prescribes. At this point, at the following meeting, you still, on August 16, you still have time to appoint alternate members.
Okay.
We'll keep that on the agenda for alternate members then.
Please do, okay?
Okay, Mr. Mayor.
Next item?
Item 11, under new business agenda items, item 11A, this is a first reading and this is a public hearing, an ordinance of the mayor and city commission of the city of West Miami, Florida pertaining to establishing a temporary moratorium for six months for the effective date of this ordinance on the acceptance, review, approval, and issuance of any land development permits as the term, as the term is defined in Florida statutes, section 163 316416, business tax receipts, or any other license or permit for the establishment or operation of dispensing facilities within the city engaged in the onsite distribution, sale, delivery, or retail of low THC cannabis, medical cannabis or cannabis deliveries devices pursuant to sections 381986 and 4990295 of the Florida statutes. In order to provide the city with an opportunity to review the new cannabis bill, SBA, third engrossed compassionate medical cannabis act, providing penalties for violation hereof, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinance provisions, and providing for effective date retroactive to first reading of this ordinance for zoning in progress purposes, this ordinance shall be effective upon first reading of this ordinance by mayor and city commission.
I know there's no discussion, but I do have a question. On the heading, I got a little, I just want to make sure that, so this item only talks about any development as it relates to medical cabinets? Is that what it is? The medical marijuana, is that what we're talking about?
Yes, sir.
Only specific to that? Okay?
Mayor and not-
That's the only thing that had been approved by the state legislature.
Okay.
There's no cannabis being authorized to be sold raw pursuant to the statute that was signed by the governor on June 6, I believe.
Okay, I just wanted to specify, a moratorium is for that particular reason. Okay. Open the public hearing? Anybody wants to speak on the subject? Okay.
This was properly advertised, by the way.
Closing the public hearing, back to the table. I need a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, can you call the vote?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanes?
Yes.
Commissioner, Vice Mayor Blanca?
Yes.
Mayor Mujina?
Yes.
5-0, item passes, and the second reading of this ordinance will take place on August 16, 2017.
Okay, next item?
Item 11B, this is a first reading, an ordinance of the mayor and city commission of the city of West Miami, amending the city of West Miami zoning ordinance 282 as amended by the adopted zoning map dated October 3, 2007, changing the zoning designation and classification for certain parcels of land as described in section 3, article 1 of zoning ordinance 282, best described in the body of this ordinance and future zoning map attached herein as exhibit 8, and providing for compatibility and uniformity with the surrounding parcels and as adopted in the 2016 West Miami Comprehensive Development Plan, which changed the future land use map as recommended by the study of Florida International University Metropolitan Center and as recommended by the city commission service, serving as the local planning agency and as approved by the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity, providing for conflict correction, providing for severability, providing for transmittal, and providing for effective date, mayor and city commission.
Thank you. Mr. Penna, anything that you want to add to this?
Mr. Mayor, basically, it's adopting your recent future land use map changes to your zoning on those parcels to match.
Okay. Question, last I recall, this was going back to the planning and zoning board, the...
They already, it's here because they've already approved it unanimously.
Okay, so it's approved by the planning and zoning board?
Yes.
Okay.
And recommended.
Huh? Recommended. Recommended, okay.
I don't see the word public hearing unless you have any other question, but this is a public hearing, right?
This is the first reading.
Okay.
First reading.
First reading? No public hearing?
No.
Okay, all right.
So, we can't even discuss? This is only first reading, there's no discussion?
No discussion.
Motion.
Need a motion?
Second.
Okay, call the vote?
Yes, Commissioner Rodriguez, have your vote.
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanes?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanca?
Yes.
Mayor Mujina?
Yes.
5-0, item passes.
The public hearing item on this is scheduled for August 16, 2017.
Okay. Thank you. I guess next item will be deferred?
Yes, deferred until August 16, so the following item is a request for approval for exchange of- Yes, deferred until August sixteen, so the following item is a request for approval for exchange of city keys between the city of West Miami and the town of Medley. This item is sponsored by Mayor Mujina.
Thank you. This item, I requested this item to be put back over here to follow protocol, we, as we have done in the past. Madam Manager, can you elaborate a little bit on this, please?
Yes, um, Mr. Mayor, based on what I know and what we have been in conversation with, with the mayor of, of, the mayor's office with the town of, of, city of Medley, Mayor Roberto Martel, would like to have a program which basically entails an exchange of our municipal keys to each other as a fraternal, um, symbol of unity and friendship between our cities, and this is something that he would like to take countywide. Obviously, the, the reasoning for it is, obviously, um, our cities are in the same business of delivering service, and he believes that it is a, a nice fraternal gesture, and he extended this invitation to Mayor Mujina, and as the mayor advised, he'd like to follow protocol and bring it to you for your approval. It's not that we are distinguished for anything in particular, but basically, it's a sign of unity, if anything, as municipalities.
So, I bring it to you tonight, I think it's a, it's a great idea.
Motion.
Okay, so our motion, I need a second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, um, when would you like for us to invite Mayor Martel to, to the city?
Um, well, uh, if possible, the next, uh, I don't know how heavy our next agenda will be, but if possible, the sixteen, see if, if they're available.
Yes, I was in contact with his office, and, and that was the date that we proposed.
Right.
Okay.
So, we'll be in contact with his office.
Right, if there is any cancellation on his part because of scheduling issues, we'll bring it back to you, or we'll provide you something in writing as a follow-up with an alternative suggestion.
Thank you. Next item?
Yes, next item is, uh, is part of the preliminary budget subneydel. Item eleven E is the submission of the preliminary city budget for fiscal year two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen by city manager.
Okay. Madam Manager?
Yes, uh, Mr. Mayor and members of the city commission, on Friday of last week, my office delivered the preliminary budget, along with the message and all the exhibits that we provided, the budget as we see it from a preliminary standpoint for the fiscal year, fiscal year commencing October first, two thousand and seventeen through September thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen. Each year, we select a cover, and we select a team, a theme for our municipality, and this year, our theme is seventy years young, seventy years and forever young, I apologize. We are in the midst of our seventieth year celebration, and we celebrate that through April of next year. Having said this, we provided you with a message that is intended to walk you through the budget as prescribed by law, and provide you with anything that we consider significant information, that we consider critical to the budget process. This said, as you know, every year, we are governed by the State of Florida Department of Revenue, Truth, and Milage Regulations, and we must follow their, um, their budget for, in terms of timeline, in, in terms of reporting, and we work also in conjunction with the Office of Property Appraiser. This said, our public hearing dates can never take place the same day that the Miami Dade County Board of County Commissioners hold their meetings, or the school board, for that matter, because it's a conflict of the truth and milage regulation. We had initially agreed at a prior agenda, in a previous meeting and a prior agenda, we agreed to set aside, and you authorized to set aside, Thursday, September seventh, two thousand and seventeen, at seven thirty for our tentative budget hearing, and Wednesday, September twentieth, two thousand and seventeen, at seven thirty P.M. for the final budget hearing. This morning, at eleven thirty in the morning, the Office of Property Appraiser advised us via an email that we could not hold, or, or that the Board of County Commissioners changed the date of their tentative budget hearing, and instead of having it on Tuesday, September fifth, they have elected to change it to Thursday, September seventh, which puts us in a predicament for our tentative budget meeting. So before I get further into the budget message, we need to select another tentative date for the budget hearing. And I am simply recommending that in order to meet the advertising guidelines that we must follow to be compliant with the State of Florida, that we actually elect Tuesday, September fifth, which is the day after the long weekend, the Labor Day weekend, we can hold our meeting. The reason why we did not recommend that Wednesday, the sixth, is because Miami Dade County Public School Systems have their budget meeting on Wednesday, September sixth. So, I think, um, that would be our first choice of recommendation, and our next available date would be Monday, September eleventh, and that is, if we can meet the publication deadline, um, that I know that the clerk sent out to the Miami Herald, because we do have to advertise in a paper of general circulation, and they require much anticipation on, in terms of notice. In, and overabundance of caution, as our city attorney eloquently puts it, we've asked them to reserve half a page for a, um, for the possibility of having our first tentative meeting on Monday, September eleventh. So, those are two choices, my first recommendation would be Tuesday, September fifth. I know we're just returning from the long weekend, and I know that many of you, or some of you, may have some, some plans, so what we will do is deliver the tentative, tentative budget the week before that. So, I don't know which of the two dates may be suitable for you, or maybe your particular preference, and if you can, can we discuss that now, because we do have to certify our first step to compliance? We need to do that tomorrow with the State of Florida.
My, although I'm not too crazy about the fifth, uh, but I definitely don't like to do it on nine eleven. Talk about the budget on that significant date.
I'm fine with the fifth, Mr. Mayor, I'm fine with the fifth.
Yes. So, it is the fifth.
You believe that?
Yes.
Nine eleven, oh my God.
So, we're changing from the seventh to the fifth? Is that correct, Madam Manager?
That is correct.
That would be our first, uh, our, our first date, uh, recommendation, yes.
What about thirteen, you don't like neither than thirteen?
The fifth works.
So, are, are we in agreement that...
It should go with me.
Yes.
That is okay with everybody?
In the morning.
Okay, so, uh, our tentative budget hearing will be advertised and certified for Tuesday, September fifth, two thousand and seventeen. Thank you for that, accommodating that request. The oper, the Office of Property Appraisal has provided us with some information that has allowed us to take our budget into a preliminary mode. Our present milage rate is six point eight eight five eight, with one mil of that milage dedicated to the City of West Miami Recreation Center as prescribed by ordinance one thirty-three. Our property tax revenue is calculated at ninety-five percent pursuant to the truth and milage regulations set forth by the State of Florida. Under the new assessed schedule, as provided by Miami Dade County, using our present milage rate, each mil has an equal to four hundred fifty-one thousand, five hundred and forty-three dollars to the City of West Miami, but, budgeted at the ninety-five percent requirement. That reflects an overall increase of twenty-nine point one percent over last year's number. The twenty-nine percent increase comes into play because we have had some commercial development that has played a significant factor in your assessed value. Our growth is partially the impact of development, broken down by the increase in the overall assessed values in homes, on average, is eleven point one percent, and in the commercial area, that has produced approximately eighteen percent of new recurring revenue opportunity for the city. A total of two hundred and forty-four senior citizens claim additional homestead exemption that qualified based on their household income and the county guidelines. As such, we also lose from our, of our assessed values and taxable value, we lose in excess of eighty thousand dollars due to that benefit that the city has afforded the senior citizens who qualify. The State of Florida has provided us with what they, we call the DR four twenty form, which is the form that's going to give us the final number for calculation of your budget. We've provided you with a number of, of exhibits, one that is broken down by, um, two exhibits, one for non-homestead properties and one for homestead properties in increments of ten thousand dollars in taxable assessed values, so that everybody is aware of what the potential impact for tax increases will be, even if you maintain your milage rate flat, which is what we are recommending, that you, the course of action that this commission should follow. If you have an increase in your assessed values, obviously, property owners will be paying a little bit more in real estate and property taxes to the city of West Miami. We have given you some actual scenarios, starting with a ninety thousand dollar assessed value with ten thousand dollar increments to show you the variables. For a homestead property, the average homeowner will see less than a dollar fifty to two dollars a month as an impact to their property taxes. We've introduced, at the request of Commissioner Blanes, a colored chart broken down in detail that gives us a pretty good snapshot of where our taxes go, and I think this is an important piece of information, because sometimes pictures speaks volumes. Sometimes they're more important that, or more understandable that than actual numbers. The pie chart is contained and contemplated in your exhibits, and it tells you what percentage of the taxes collected stay with the city. The city of West Miami keeps thirty percent of the overall taxes collected by Miami Dade County, as there are other independent authorities that garner, um, taxes, tax revenue from each and every property owner in the city of West Miami. So, thirty percent, let's say you have a bill of three thousand dollars in property taxes, thirty percent of that, which is nine hundred dollars, stays within the municipality, and the rest goes to fund Miami Dade County Public Schools, Miami Dade County, South Florida Water Management District, our fire department, uh, or the county's fire department, your libraries, and other voted, uh, debt services that we pay as, as taxpayers. The, um, the general fund proposed preliminary budget has a, a total amount of six million, three hundred nineteen thousand, two hundred and seventy-seven dollars, or a sixteen point five increase over the two thousand and sixteen, twenty-seven, two thousand and seventeen budget. While we have made significant progress with realizing much-needed real estate and property taxes for the coming year, it should be noted that some of the revenues have declined in other categories, and we also have impact fees coming in that are being, and have been devoted to projects that we're putting back into the community as a result of the city's ability to collect impact fees and to take care of capital improvement projects. So, um, of, of all this additional revenue that we're receiving, four hundred forty-seven thousand dollars are impact fee monies that you're going to show as transferring in into your general fund and being devoted solely for capital improvement projects. That has absolutely nothing to do with real estate and property taxes. We've taken into consideration all the retirement, um, calculations, all the unfunded mandates, your FICA taxes, your wage increase, medical and life insurance, which is increasing as a result of the Affordable, the ACA, and all the compliance issues that come with Affordable Care Act. We have included pay increases for city employees in all divisions, along with the applicable benefits. We discussed those with you during our individual meetings on the budget. We have honored our collective bargaining agreement with the West Miami Police Department, and built in their increase into the budget. The, 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 the primary, as I see it, costs or cost of, of increase in, in, in expenses is, um, is attributed to the medical insurance issue. And obviously, we don't have a crystal ball, but I had a long conversation with our, the Florida League of Cities. We are part of a pool program which is comprised of a number of participating, participating cities throughout South Florida that have a tendency to contain costs, because the, it is a fact that participating in a pool has a lot of benefits. Nonetheless, Affordable Care Act has really taken its toll on all the participating, um, cities. The, um, again, this is a preliminary budget, and we expect that some changes will occur as we get closer to your tentative and final budget hearing process. Our budget addresses all of your concerns, all of your, uh, all of your requests on particular projects as chaired by your committees, uh, but again, we aim to deliver efficient city services that has always been at the, uh, at, at the top of our list of priorities. Grants have played a significant role in many of our budget categories, because we are leveraging impact fee dollars that were not there in the past, and we're transferring those into the respective funds, so that we can continue to complete those projects that you have approved during the course of the year. Like I said, we have exhibits, and then you have a breakdown by each and every division, the major players. We have, uh, we have adjusted some of our operating accounts, some we have decreased based on our six-month numbers, our March thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen numbers, and we have used those for the purpose of projecting expenses as well as revenues. We have broken down, like I said, every single department. I know that earlier today, we had a special meeting where both the position of city manager, along with the transition, and the position of city clerk were contemplating, and we have to come back to you with some, um, financial recommendations. We have the legal services, again, the office of the city attorney, that is under the sole jurisdiction of the commission, so in the coming month, we'd like to get some guidance from you, so that we can be as close to our budget, um, projections, so that we can stay within those projections in the coming year. We have already employed the services of a full-time code enforcement officer, and one employee who was temporarily filling in for that position is now back in the stormwater division. So, we've contemplated every single scenario. We have one vacancy that I would, not a vacancy, but we've added a new position to the streets division. We need bodies in public works. The more projects you put out there and you roll out, the more sustainability issues you have at hand. So, what we'd like to do is revisit this item, we have this employee contemplated to start March first of next year, which would be six months into the new fiscal year. However, after speaking with Mr. Penna and some of the members of the city commission and the mayor, we cannot ignore the fact that we need to have bodies out there, because we are finding ourselves, spreading ourselves very thin, and we're actually having to deploy manpower from different assignments to cover for sick leave, vacation time, on-the-job injuries, and unforeseen circumstances. So, by adding one body or one person to the streets division, it's going to give us some leverage on accomplishing some of these projects, like the street signs and some other things that we're talking... that we're talking about on how to be better and give back to the community in, in terms of projects. The budget is also comprised of the separate enterprise funds. And again, our message is a, I want to say it is a, excuse me, 13-page message that goes to the heart of each and every department. It identifies the concerns and it highlights the, you know, the workings of each and every division and/or department. There is one thing that I would like to put on the record and point out. Right now, we are in conversation with Miami-Dade County, the Office of the OCITT, which is the office that governs our half-cent penny tax distribution to the city. And we just underwent a five-year audit by the auditor's office by Miami-Dade County that, that didn't look good at the beginning of the audit findings. There's a significant difference between what our auditors have booked on the books as the reserves that the city has in terms of the use of the cert, of the cert tax dollars and what we have in either reserve designated or unreserved designated versus what they're saying we should be, we should have in reserve designated. And so we have appealed to the Executive Director's Office on this. They are working with their auditing team. And based on the conversations that Mrs. Leon and I have had recently with Mr. Nestor Toledo and Marlene with the PTP office and the conversations that Charles Skerr, the executive director and their auditing team are having, it looks like we may have to make a minor adjustment, but not to what initially was reported in my, in my manager's submission, which could have been impacting to the city's coffers. So more to come on this and I expect that we will have a concrete answer for you by the tentative submittal. The exact revenue projections for the half-cent penny tax, which we know as the PTP, will not be available until August of 2017. We will get those numbers from Miami-Dade County as we get closer to the budget. We are also evaluating all of our separate enterprise funds, your building department, your water revenue funds. And we have transferred money to cover shortfalls in other areas. However, your general fund is looking a lot healthier than it has for many years. And I'm happy to report that based on this preliminary budget, we will be able to address all of the priorities, take care of all city employees that are the backbone of this city. And we can tuck away $250,000 to reserves, which is huge. Out of 400-plus thousand dollars of new revenue, I think that this is a very fiscally sound preliminary budget. And I want to commend Mrs. Leon for all her work. She's my right hand and my department directors are my left hand. And so this is all about teamwork and each of them should be commended for maintaining expenses down, for being frugal and fiscally understanding of the limitations that the city has to offer. So that being said, I would encourage you to browse through the budget. I put in as many exhibits as possible so that you could share those with your constituents, study this information and come back to us with your questions, concerns, ideas, suggestions. And this is pretty much, a pretty lean budget. We are not putting any luxury money or any wasteful spending anywhere and you know that we are not about that. We are all about preserving and, and saving the taxpayer dollars and whatever we can, putting it out there into service. And this is why our community is so distinguished in Miami-Dade County. We are unique. We do a lot with less. It's not that we do more, it's just that at times, we aim to do the impossible with less. And we do, we do walk the extra mile. So that being said, my office is recommending that you stay flat on your milage and that you adopt this preliminary budget and allow us to take now our compliance issues to the next step. That pretty much concludes my, my report for this evening. I would be more than happy to entertain any questions on the budget.
Any question for the manager?
I don't have any questions.
Nor do I, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, I like.
Yes.
I'd like to make a comment. Another question.
Go ahead.
I have understand in our budget that this year, we are dedicating a quarter of a million to the reserves, $250,000 to the reserve of the city.
That's unprecedented.
I have to congratulate the administration in the way that we are handling the city because I think it's the first time in the history of the city that a quarter of a million dollars are sent to the reserve. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Very good.
Thank you to everybody. Thank you to everybody.
Thank you. Very good point, Commissioner. Any, any further comments?
Just one comment, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank the city manager publicly for not, for meeting with me, not once, not twice, but probably three times for all the clarifications that I, I sought to understand this budget. So I want to thank you for all the time that you dedicated to me in better understanding the budget.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
Excellent work. Excellent work.
Thank you.
Madam Manager? Mrs. Leon?
I'm Mrs. Leon.
The attorney have nothing to do with this.
No, nothing, nothing to do with this.
I want to make clear, you know, I'm not part of the administration.
The budget.
You're just a legal counsel, so I don't want to involve you in those things.
Okay, can we follow the order of the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, next item is item 11F. Resolution of the City of West Miami, Florida, establishing the 2017 tentative milage rate upon all real and personal property within the city limits for the payment of the amounts appropriated in the 2017-18 preliminary budget by my mayor and city commission.
Make a motion.
Motion. Second.
Okay, so I have a first and a second. I don't know, there's a tie on the second. Whatever. Okay, call the vote, please.
Yes, Commissioner Blanes, do the vote.
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanca?
Mayor Mujina?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Next item?
Item 11G, resolution of the City of West Miami, Florida, adopting the 2017-18 preliminary budget by mayor and city commission.
Make a motion.
Motion.
Second. Okay, call the vote.
Yes, Commissioner Blanes?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez? Mayor Mujina?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Item H?
Item H, resolution of the City of West Miami, Florida, adopting the preliminary water enterprise fund budget for the year 2017-18 in the sum of $876,310.00 by mayor and city commission.
Make a motion.
Motion. Second.
Okay, call the vote.
Yes, Commissioner Blanes?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanca?
Mayor Mujina?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Go to the order. Need a motion to adjourn? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Good night. Thank you very much.